Hello, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits. For consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it looks like we have six members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call. Mario DeFolvio. Joe D'Angelo is absent. Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, rocking like a hurricane.
Thank you. Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest.
Here.
And Steve Cipressa. Alright. We have a quorum and can proceed. Next item on the agenda. Would be approval of minutes, but I don't think, we didn't get any minutes from the last meeting. On base camp, did we? I didn't see them.
We'll have both sets next month.
Okay, so no, no approval of minutes. Alright, next item on the agenda. Is straight to public hearings and final deliberations, since we do not have any secret determinations tonight. Alright, in this portion of our meeting, we will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. And for most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of the project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed. We will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak tonight for our public record. And anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by. Giving us your name and address for our records. For anyone unfamiliar with the format of a public hearing, we will be opening, opening the microphone to solicit public comment about specific projects that are up for review. Public comments should be directed. Towards the members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicant directly. It is not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with the applicant directly during the meeting. The commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public comment portion of the meeting. And when there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. Commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to our review. Again, it will not be acceptable for any member of the public to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicants while they respond to questions or comments that arose during the public hearing. The time for us to hear from the public will be while the public hearing is open. Once it is closed, the public is here as an audience to the proceedings. And any member of the public who cannot abide by these rules will be asked to leave. Alright. So tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant AOW Construction. Project address is 439 Court Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business in an existing commercial building in the C1 Service Commercial District. Is the green light on?
How's that?
Perfect, and you gotta speak right into the microphone.
No problem.
Perfect.
My name is Al Bergazoli. I'm with AOW Construction. We're located at 30 Essex Street in Albany, New York. We are here to present again for our location. At 439 Court Street for the use of an adult-use cannabis location, dispenser, I mean. As previously indicated, it's about a 4,000-square-foot existing building. The site will remain as is. The interior will be renovated, approximately 2,600 square feet. Of the interior will be renovated into a dispensary. Portions of it will be open to the public. Other portions will be secured for storage and employee use only. Drawings, if we want to review drawings again, if anybody needs to look at it, but that's the overall project.
Alright, just try and, try and speak into the microphone.
How's that? Is that better?
That's perfect, yep.
Okay, great. So again, it's a 4,000-square-foot existing building. It's, some of you may know it as the old A&W root beer location. They are, we are not doing anything to the exterior. The parking, the drive-through, all exterior will remain as is. The only work will be done on the interior, approximately 2,600 square feet of the 4,000-square-foot building will be used at this time. A portion will be available to the public. There'll be public restrooms and the public sales area. The rest of it will be vault for storage and back of the house secured for employees only.
Alright. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Chris?
Yeah, a question for the applicant. Something I did not get a chance to ask when you were here last month. Can you explain first, you're not actually working for a cannabis retailer. You're right, you're working for the Dormitory Authority. Can you explain how and why the Dormitory Authority is involved in this project?
So this location was selected through the Dormitory Authority State of New York's program with the social economic cannabis program. DASNY is working in conjunction with OCM and SESC to locate projects, to then build them out. And ultimately. Turn them over to licensees in the area or, you know, from out of the area, I'm not sure exactly where the people are coming from. But they, you know, it's a statewide program right now going on. This will be our third location for build-out and we have a potential fourth one coming up.
So these designs are already approved by the Dormitory Authority?
Yes, yes. So the designs go through a process through the Dormitory Authority State of New York. They have a third-party reviewer. Everything has to conform to the OCM guidelines, the Office of Cannabis Management. Who ultimately licenses the store. You know, they come through, they do an inspection, they will ultimately license the store. And they license the licensee for retail cannabis.
So is the Dormitory, is the Dormitory Authority going to be a landlord?
No.
So they're going to sell this to the licensee?
They're not even selling it. They're just managing the program. So the Dormitory Authority is managing the program because they're, when it comes to construction for the state of New York, they're an expert. So they're, this is a new. This is new for the state of New York. You know, we don't have these anywhere. So the Dormitory Authority was brought in. In conjunction with OCM and SESC to manage the program. Ultimately, they do not own anything. There's an equity fund that is backing the project financially.
So who currently is the owner of the property?
Right now, the owner of the property is man. I gotta look up. He's still gonna be the owner. The property rented. So the lease through DITNE and then gets turned over to the licensee. So currently, the property owner. Is 439 Court Street LLC of 49 Coventry Lane, Binghamton. They will continue to be the property owner. They'll be leasing it in the short term to DASNY. But then, so we can do construction and then ultimately it will go to whoever the licensee is. They'll hold the lease.
Thank you.
On the record, what was the name of the current land owner?
The property owner is 439 Court Street LLC, 49 Coventry Lane, Binghamton. Don't have the guys. Yeah.
Yeah. I can, I can tell you that the owner is the, is the, is a partnership that built out the site when it was A&W. So it's the same owner.
Yeah.
And we got an email and support from the owner, which doesn't really qualify as a, like a public comment, but, but it's signed by Manjat Dillon. And, and I remember dealing with him when he applied for the A&W way back then, yep.
May I ask, how do you determine who the new licensee will be?
I do not. I'm just with the construction company. That's something that DASNY and OCM and SESC, I believe, actually, it's SESC and OCM handle the licensee.
Okay.
And assigning who the licensee will be to the area, to this location.
Interesting. My second question, because we asked this of the other applicant for a cannabis facility. Is what is the security protocol for this building? Do you have anything set up with all that?
Yeah, so they'll be in the front lobby. So this lobby check-in here is a secured lobby. You can come through this door. There'll be a desk here with a security guard. They'll be checking ID, making sure you're over 21. You get your ID scanned. Then you'll be able to enter into the sales area where you'll have access, escorted access. You won't be left alone in here. To this area in through here. You'll have limited access into this hallway and then the two restrooms. There's a POS counter that will be here. Separating. It's kind of small, but you can see here, here's your POS counter. So this will be where the tenders are. Back through the way you came in, through the secured entrance.
Are there cameras on the exteriors of the building?
There are cameras everywhere.
Okay.
This location has more cameras than you would see at a, at a bank. So I've done, we've completed two of these already. The outside, cameras on the back, on the front, on the side. Cameras all through here. The only areas that don't have camera coverage are the restrooms and the lactation room. Is, it, never cameras in a location.
Is there a drawing somewhere in the specs that show us camera locations and angles and sweeps?
I don't have that currently because we're not 100% designed, but I mean, they'll, there, it is every corner of this place.
I was gonna ask this, Tito, have we in the past requested or required the previous cannabis applicants to provide camera maps? I seem to remember that. If I'm not sure if that was required, they just add that in.
We will have ours in our submittal for the building permit. Yep. I don't think it's a requirement for the building permit. It's part of our final set of drawings that will go in for the building permit.
I believe we did ask for approximate camera locations for Just Breathe on Court Street. That being said, they don't know for sure the exact locations until they're at that building permit phase where they know how their electrical is going to run and everything.
Alright, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Alright, so we're gonna open the public hearing if you don't mind taking a seat at the seat back here. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant AOW Construction. Project address is 439 Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business in an existing commercial building in the C1 Service Commercial District. If anybody would like to speak about the project, yep, come right up to the microphone and tell us what you think.
Good evening, board. My name is Peter Stewart. I'm a resident of Binghamton, 62 Fairview Avenue, east side of Binghamton. When I heard about this project, I was not happy at all, and I'm here to share some concerns as a homeowner, as a taxpayer. But also, I have five kids in this district. In this, that live in Binghamton and go to school and work and all this other stuff and pay taxes. My concern is that we already have three cannabis stores in this area. We got one in Binghamton, right downtown. So when you come into our beautiful city, you could sell, you can come and buy your weed. We got one in Vestal, and now we have one in Johnson City. The way this is billed as a drive-through cannabis store is not right for the east side of Binghamton. You have, you're gonna have traffic issues, but also I don't know if any one of you, any one of you board members have gone and stood on that site. You can see Calvin Coolidge Elementary School from that site. So I understand this is a money grab. This is a tax grab. This man here is just a construction guy, wants to make his money. You do not have to approve this project. Just because the dormitory of New York wants to. Make some money, because that's what this is all about, you do not have to approve this project. And again, I'm a homeowner. I'm taxpayer. I have kids. That are, that not only live in this area, but again, this is not good for the city of Binghamton. We should not be known as the city where you could drive up and you can buy your weed. It's a residential area. You can see an elementary school from that location. That's all I have to say. And if you guys do vote this in, there's gonna be some issues.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come up and speak about the project?
Good evening. I'm Don Hudson. This is my wife, Marlene. We live right next door to the. To the building. And. As a matter of fact, the. The building, the property is 50 feet from the residential boundary. 50, 50 feet. And the building is 1,275 feet from the school that that gentleman was mentioning. It's visible. That's 425 yards. For football field. And. I'm curious whether there's gonna be any smoking on-site using any of the cannabis on-site.
We, we can ask him. So any questions you have, just. Bring them out and we'll ask him in the, when he.
The controls on supplies, I'm concerned with that and the possibility of lacing the drug. Who is the responsible person that's gonna be running the place? They, apparently, they don't have anyone to go in there yet. Is that correct?
We can ask him again. To comment on that afterwards, yeah.
Alright, clearing snow in the winter time. I never did it in the past. Usually I had to do it my wife or some other neighbors. I'm kind of sick of that. The landscaping is all rocks. Some of them to the side of your head. I'm sick of cleaning them off my porch. It's got nothing to do with the people coming in there, but it's just the kids in the neighborhood. And the cameras on the outside of the building, I, is, will the cameras and the security system be installed by professional or is it gonna be a do-it-yourselfer? And the landscaping I'm talking about, the rocks they use to cover the dirt. It's pushing in my fence in the, in my backyard and completely destroying it. There's not much I can do about it right now, but it's just the weight from all the rocks. The other problem we had, even when, when they first built the building, we're going to open the A&W. We had a problem with light pollution. And. The place illuminated, illuminated our house that looked like the White House. And. They did try to correct it and they did it through meters and which I had to provide to prove that it was beyond the zoning. And, but that has to be fixed. If it's gonna be a drive-through, that'll end up, the cars will be about 12 feet from my house. And the lights are right on the corner of my property and the A&W building. I'd like to know who's paying the lease on that, who will be paying the lease on that building to Mr. Dillon. And. I'd like to know also if the taxes are up to date and is it Mr. Dillon who is paying the taxes on it? And the hours of operation is a concern. When will I be able to get some of these questions answered?
Well. So after the public hearing is over and we've heard from everybody today, the applicant will come back up to the microphone. We'll ask him the questions that we think are relevant to a site plan review. So I'll be honest, the questions about taxes have nothing to do with what we're here for tonight, so we probably won't ask him about those.
About the what?
About the taxes.
Oh, okay.
Because we're, we're charged with just looking at the site plan to make sure it's safe and appropriate for the neighborhood. But, but yeah, as soon as we're done with the public hearing, we'll have him come back up and we'll ask him your questions and he'll have a chance to respond to those questions.
Okay, that's about all I have.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm Marlene Hudson, and to start off, I worked at the Binghamton School District, Thomas Jefferson School for 30, oh. I worked. Closer, okay. I worked at the Binghamton School District for 30 years at Thomas Jefferson School. So I am very familiar with children. The problem that we had over there with A&W was drugs. When marijuana was not legal. The cops that I called were there almost every other day. In our yard, out in front, my son is handicapped, 51 years old, in a wheelchair. We went over to A&W and there was people standing in front of me dealing in drugs, being opened only four days. I screeched and said, excuse my language, what the hell is that? Everybody heard me. Could have dropped a pin. Our garbage, our food that I paid $16 for, went in the garbage because I was scared that they were gonna put something in it. I have two dogs. Were right next door. I have problems there right now and. I'll be honest with you, I think A&W closed because of the police that I called there constantly. I'd like to know who is in charge of this because 10 to 1, I will be calling. Probably every other day again to the police or the owner, like I called to Manjat Dillon constantly. My other issue with this is. Them being out on the street with drugs and throwing stuff into my yard when I walk with the dogs, smoking drugs out there, smelling that stuff. That my husband has asthma, infancyema, open heart he had. I have the same thing, COP. Breathing that stuff is terrible. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, seven, eight of you. Who would want that in their backyard right next door to them? Also, Calvin Coolidge School, like my husband said, is 50 feet up, like that man also addressed. The children walk up and down my street. Bigelow, Mason, every street. East Junior is right over there. Every other marijuana or whatever drug place that is. Is not, they're in commercial. We are commercial and residential. None of those other ones are anywhere by residential. With houses behind them and right around them is what I'm, what I heard from other people. I've also heard that a lot of the. Mayor, the councilmen, nobody is in favor of this either. Having it in that area and here in Binghamton. There is a lot of other areas that they could go to that is not by commercial, I mean, yeah, commercial, residential and children. My big problem that we had before also was. Through A&W, older coming in front of my house, a house across the street, two houses up the street. With young kids selling them marijuana. And I'm afraid with this being over there. It's gonna be the same problem. These young kids are gonna be standing on the street, knowing that that's that place and getting it from other. The older people that are eligible to sell. To buy it. They're saying that their security, well, my house is very secured as well. And I've had other issues where we had to call the police. They wanted our security stuff to verify incidences over there and other places in the neighborhood, which also. It also happened with a girl on Bigelow Street. They went through the neighborhood with security and Taco Bell has secured, I'm sure Burger King does too, and Fazanol. What other issues I wanted to say. That's mostly my big thing is about the safety for the children and animals and just, it's in a wrong neighborhood. There has to be a better place in the city than around schools and younger children. And these children are elementary. Kindergarten to fifth and East Junior is. Six through, I think, not eight, pardon me, eight, six through eight.
Alright.
I'd like to add one thing if I could.
Sure.
When my wife walks to the Family Dollar store. And there's a, there's a little stoop on the corner where the Fazanol building used to be. And more than once, we've walked by there and there'd be a, someone sitting there on the stoop. With a needle hanging out of his arm and. Unable to speak or, you know, couldn't say anything, was just in a total stupor. That's happened numerous times. It was a favorite place for him. And too many times, you'll see people out right in the middle of Court Street. Some with half their clothes on and waving their hands in the air in traffic. And. You know, if it's that bad now. How's it gonna be later?
Alright. Well, thank you very much.
And also, I, there is no neighborhood watch on our street. But I could tell you something, and I got this right from the Binghamton Police, many of them. I am also the neighborhood watch of that street. I watch what's going on. They told me, watch, Marlene, call. Your eyes will help us. And I've done that with everything on that street. We had a green block next to their, Tito, I'm sure you know what it was. I've had people taken out of there with drugs left and right. And like I did with A&W. That was closed down because of the drugs, not because of not delinquent taxes.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay. I hope you do the right decision for the City of Binghamton. I've lived here. I'm 72 years old. I've lived here all my life. And the drugs and the problems here are going way downhill.
Alright. Alright, thank you. Anybody else who would like to comment?
I can answer one of their questions while, while we wait for her to come down. They asked whether or not smoking on-site would be allowed. That is a different type of license. That's an on-site consumption license. So if they wanted to do that, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission. What's under review right now is only for a dispensary, so people would buy and leave.
Alright. Hello? I'm gonna have you grab that microphone right next to you and try and talk right into it.
Okay.
You gotta get right up close to it, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I think so.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Papastra. I live at 8 Bigelow Street.
I have been an outsider my entire life. Um, East Side is the best place to be, it used to be, but now like the woman said, it's been going downhill, but so have other neighborhoods in, in our area and our city. Um, putting that cannabis store there is the worst decision you could possibly make. You have, and is it going to be a drive-through? Is there, is it a drive-through? Really? So you can go get your kid a Happy Meal and then drive through and get a cannabis for yourself? That's awesome. It's great. No, we don't need that. Binghamton doesn't need that. The school is right there. The Fairview Park is not far away where kids play, swim, softball, baseball. They used to have tournaments at that park constantly. People coming in from different cities. Going down to Court Street to get food from Taco Bell, Burger King, McDonald's. And now the parents can just go on over to the cannabis store. That's, that's great. That's just great. Bad place for this, this cannabis store. Not a good place. I just think it's the wrong decision. I agree that it's uh, probably a moneymaker from New York, but let's find a different place to put this store. So that they can make money if that's what they want to do. But Court Street, four thirty-nine is not a place for this, for this store.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else who would like to speak about the project?
Nick, did you want uh, me to read the letter in the rec, into the record from the property owner? Um, I know it's not really public comment, but it is information that they wanted the board to have. I'm just realizing now, so.
Uh, yeah, I guess it probably makes sense.
Should have had it pulled up. Uh, so it says, my name is Manjat Dillon and I'm one of the two landlords for four thirty-nine Court Street. I'm going to summarize. This property has been vacant for more than six years and the last business that operated there for a year or so cannot bear the cost of doing business such as mortgage and especially the property taxes. After the closure of A and W and the location, we were able to get a reduction on property taxes, which are currently uh, at thirty-one thousand dollars a year. We have not been able to find a tenant for the last six years that will move into the property with such a high cost of doing business. The current cannabis retail business has the potential to bear the cost and rejuvenate this parcel of land. Another point I'd like to make is that we have at least three break-ins at this property in the last six months uh, with about seven thousand dollars in damage. I believe an active tenant will deter these problems on the property. Without this tenant, I foresee this property just deteriorating for years to come. I've been living in Binghamton for more than twenty years and would like to see a future with flourishing businesses in Binghamton and the surrounding areas. Thank you for reading my comments. Manjat Dillon.
All right. All right. Uh, anybody else? All right. Seeing nobody else, we will close the public hearing. And we'll give the applicant the opportunity to respond to anything that was said.
Would you like to start with direct questions that you want answered from the comments?
Uh, you can do it any way you want.
Okay.
Yep.
Um. So as for relevant questions to this application, the location is more than five hundred feet from an existing school, which is the New York State Cannabis Law, Section four oh nine two. Uh, you already addressed the smoking onsite. Uh, this is not going to be a location that allows smoking onsite. However, smoking of marijuana is allowed legally in New York, wherever you're allowed to smoke a cigarette. Parking lot, snow removal will be as any business would do with their parking lot, snow a bit, snow removal. Uh, camera placement and installation by professional. Uh, yes, the cameras will be installed by a professional company with twenty-four hour monitoring. It will be done actually by a local company, Meyer Security. They have done, I would think at this point fifteen to twenty cannabis locations throughout the state of New York. They're actually located in a vestal. I don't believe any other questions are pertinent to the application unless you have any others that you've written down.
Chris, you want to go first?
Yeah, I have two questions and to be fair, some of them may not be directed to, to the applicant. Tito, some of these might be more in your wheelhouse. Um, one thing that was brought up was the issue of light pollution. So I don't know what kind of uh, process went forward with the original A and W building X years ago. Was light pollution addressed there? What kind of things are maybe grandfathered in for this new applicant in this property with lights?
The, the lighting was shown on the site plan at the time, uh, but that, that being said, they cannot point lights directly at uh, residential properties. And so that can never be grandfathered in because that's not allowed. And that's what, that's what these speakers referenced before that there was an issue with lights pointing at their property and the zoning officer went out, um, and had them correct it. And so if that were, were to happen again, uh, you know, we would take enforcement action and make them, make them uh, point the lights away from the residential properties.
Second question was, one of the things that was mentioned by one of the speakers was um, opposition from city council members and or the mayor. Maybe I missed this. I did not see any official communications on record that any of the city council members are opposed to this project. And to be fair, there have been plenty of projects in the past where they've spoken up. So I don't want to shame any of our city council members. If they're telling you something privately, they're not submitting something for public record, that's not good.
We haven't received any, any uh, communication from the mayor's office or any council member.
Those, those people maybe should have spoken up on record if they had private thoughts. To be fair for thirty seconds, the que- the question I'm addressing right now is the suggestion that was made on the record that there are city councilors that are opposed to this. When there's nothing on record to that, that's what I'm addressing. So we don't want to hear any hearsay that, well, we heard so-and-so is against this. If they are, they should have written a letter on record like people have in the past. Okay, I did. And I'm addressing that here on record.
May I ask some questions? Um, so a couple of questions is, is for these neighbors who are uh, seems like they've had a real tough go with the property that that was there and I can see their concerns. Would there be anything you could do to uh, with these plans as they stand to put a, a very different dividing wall or some sort of fencing up higher to, I, I know it doesn't fix things for the whole neighborhood situation, but for their house in general and where this stands, is there something that could be done differently? And secondly, you can get to this when you can, well, we have security guards that are in the uh, exterior going throughout the parking lot on a regular basis.
So as for doing something with a uh, barricade or a different type of wall or something, um, I don't know if that would be possible. Um, you already have a cedar fence back there. It's on a slope. This, this land is sloping up in that area. Um, so I, I don't believe there's any intention of any further buffering uh, to the property. Um, regarding security, yeah, they'll, the security guards, although they're in the vestibule, you know, it's all glass, they're maintaining, you know, order. If they, you know, if they're seeing something outside, they'd be responsible for maintaining that order. Uh, there are certain guidelines within O C M's licensing program that requires the licensee to maintain the property in an orderly fashion and, you know, make sure that, you know, there's no congregating. Um, you know, this, this is very akin to a liquor store. Um, is ultimately what this is. And the rules that apply to a liquor store really apply here as well. Um, you can't just walk into a liquor store, open up a bottle of bourbon and start drinking it in the store. You know, you can walk outside and you can open and start drinking. And then at that point, it's open container and it's responsibility of um, the police force to, to handle that. Um, you know, it's not the responsibility of the licensee to maintain how everybody handles their legal consumption outside of their store.
Sorry, you don't have to answer that. Uh, all right. Kelly or anymore?
Guys, a question about landscaping. So this is something that was brought up earlier that there's uh, stones uh, against the one wall facing the neighbors or the, the fencing of the one neighbor, causing damage to the fence. So again, Tito, this might be going back to a previous A and W site plan. What is the landscaping thing? Can we request of the new applicant, getting rid of stones and putting in a, you know, grasses or something that's more ec- ec- uh, ecologically friendly?
Yeah. So I was trying to look up the landscape, the original landscape plan and it's glitching. However, I can say that the riprap that's on the east property line, that's not a compliant landscape buffer and a landscape buffer was required around, around the perimeter. Um, so you can absolutely ask for that to be removed and replaced with shrubs, trees or, or whatever you think is appropriate. Um, and that goes, that goes for the front as well. It's just grass. There should be, technically should be shrubs and trees uh, where possible in that landscape buffer.
Let me ask this of the, the applicant then. Um, I know this may not have been originally part of your plan, but if uh, if the, if the board gives you a contingent approval, are you the current landowner, DASNY and whoever else got their fingers in this, willing to do some landscaping rehab to get rid of the rocks and put in appropriate plants and trees and shrubberies and all that fun stuff?
If we are being directed by the board to replace non-compliant materials with compliant landscaping, then yes, we would have to do that.
We would just need a revised site plan. Um, and you know, that, any decision could be contingent on that being sent in and approved by staff, or you could have it, have it tabled uh, until December. It's however you would like to proceed.
Uh, Tito, was there a two thirty-nine review submitted?
Yeah, we got comments from D O T. That state, nothing can be placed in the state right away, including signage. Uh, and Upper Court Street is a state right away. If any work is proposed in the right away, they'll need a highway work permit from D O T. And uh, it says that uh, the applicant should provide details on proposed operation and anticipated traffic generation for the drive-through portion if they plan on having drive, the drive-through be active.
No, I'm sorry. Public hearing is closed. All right. Anybody else? Steve?
Uh, not so much a question, but uh, a comment. Because the school had been brought up uh, by several different speakers. I have a Google map on my laptop here showing that roughly, it's just an estimate, not exact, but the distance from the subject property to the Calvin Coolidge School is under fourteen hundred feet. Um, outside the five hundred foot zone that you referenced, but you know, because the schools had been um, made reference to on several occasions, I should disclose I'm the current school board president. So uh, you need four of us to vote yes for this. I can't be among them. And so I don't know if it's appropriate to recuse myself or to vote no. It's not going to have my support regardless. So um, just wanted to make that known.
Normally the question is, do you have any monetary stake in the game on this? Uh, no, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think him being on another board requires recusal. Uh.
Okay. All right. Um, just a couple other questions that were asked. What are you, what are the intended hours of operation? Do you know yet?
For the application, we intended, the intended hours were going to be ten AM to twelve AM, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM on Sundays. That is within the O C M guideline of acceptable hours.
What uh, so because this building is so close to a neighborhood, if we were to ask that the hours be cut down to something more reasonable, is that something that the applicant is willing to do? Or is this, this is, these are the hours that have to be used in order to make this work?
Such as what hours?
Um, I, I mean, tech, to me, ten PM sounds like a more reasonable closing time next to a highly residential neighborhood. But I'm one person. All right. Kelly kind of agreed.
The uh, proposed hours in the application are ten AM to twelve AM, which would be midnight, Monday through Saturday and ten AM to eight PM on Sunday.
All right. Is anybody else concerned by the hours of operation?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, ten would be the latest, but I'd be open to considering earlier.
Okay. Do I throw out another time for the, during the week?
No, for what it's worth, uh, is it possible to find the one that we approved on in downtown to find out what that, those hours of operation were?
I'll look them up and I'll also mention that, and I can, I can try to search this now, but I know that for liquor licenses, uh, uh, an establishment that is granted a liquor license, uh, like a bar, for example, they are entitled to stay open uh, until three AM or whatever it is on weekends, one AM on weekdays. Um, and the, and the city cannot impose different hours of operation. So if they have a liquor license, we have to let them stay open uh, for the amount of time that the, that the liquor license entitles them to. I don't know if that's the same for a cannabis license.
Oh, okay.
Oh. You know, if, if the board wants to limit the hours of operation, I, I think that's, you know, uh, maybe would satisfy some of the residents, but I just want to make sure that you're actually able to do that because the residents may think that it's going to close at ten and it's going to turn out that it'll, it'll stay open till midnight.
Let me, let me ask this. There's a lot of questions. Is there value in tabling this to give us all time to get more homework done? Nothing against the applicant. Nothing against the construction that's ongoing, but it sounds like we got a lot of legal questions about what we can and can't do, what we might not be able to do, limitations. Is there value in, I mean, I see my fellow boardman, is there value in tabling this, giving us some thought? Possibly reopening a public hearing next month? I'm, I'm.
I'm open to that. I, I just Googled, uh, just breaths, uh, hours of operation and, you know, Tuesday and Wednesday, ten to eight, Thursday, ten to nine, Friday, ten to ten, uh, ten to nine on Saturday and twelve to six on Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, if it comes down to hours, the applicant is not opposed to adjusting hours that are more appropriate for a community.
Okay.
Um, this is not the first time hours have come into play. Um, and it has been addressed previously. So I have enough knowledge and leeway to, to understand that, you know, we can adjust the hours and that can be part of the approval process.
Okay. Okay.
What do fellow board members think about similar hours to what um just breathe has?
Prefer those short hours that we're.
Me too.
Closing at nine or ten, not midnight.
No, never.
Also, that's located right in downtown. Things tend to be open later anyway and they're less residential.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah.
Dwelling.
Is is nine o'clock uh? Would everybody be okay with, we said conditional on a nine o'clock closing, the latest being nine o'clock?
Could it be, could it be allowed till ten on Friday and Saturday? As that's a.
Say that uh. There's no, really no basis for us to do that. I I don't know that for sure, um. I don't know that for sure.
I think the applicant kind of just acknowledged that there are. There are other places that have put limits on the times and that they abide by them.
That's all. They can stay open from the one in the morning and then you know that could change in in a month, right?
Yeah. Alright, but if we made our condition nine o'clock. Uh, every day except Friday and Saturday where they'd be open till ten, allowed till ten. Is that a reasonable? Condition? Everyone okay with that or is that true?
I'm good with that, but again, if if it doesn't hold water and and yeah, isn't enforceable, I I wouldn't be comfortable saying yes.
And Sunday earlier also like the other.
Okay.
I can just tell you from my. My previous approvals, um. It was written into the approval. It was, you know. The. Although the the I I think the laws here are different when it comes to, you know, liquor and and you know, but the towns. Have their own rights to have their their hours and being that this is a new type of business, I don't think a lot of towns have. You know, address that fully, you know, the hours of operation in their codes. Um, but in another town uh in upstate. It was, the hours were written right into the approval um by the planning board and that's what's being abided to.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the um guidance for retail dispensaries from the Office of Cannabis Management. Um. Municipalities are authorized to pass local laws and regulations governing the time, place and manner, including the hours of operation for adult use retail dispensary. Um, and then it goes on to say they shall not be allowed to operate from two AM to eight AM. Unless given express written permission by the municipality. Um, and. The municipal, the municipality shall not restrict operations to less than seventy hours a week. This does not prohibit licensees from allowing customers to place orders. Such as through an online website or application or accept payment for these orders outside of the licensee's hours of operation. But does prohibit licensees from providing the customer with any cannabis products they have ordered. Including through delivery until the hour, the licensee's hours of operations begin. So I think since the city could pass regulations to limit hours of operation. I would assume also that the planning commission can on a case by case basis uh make that a condition.
Okay.
Tito, we have to pass a different, um. You know, a different amendment to come up with some 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 timeframes for everything in general?
Yeah, if we wanted to make it, uh, you know, consistent across the board, yeah, we it would just be a zoning amendment.
Okay.
Couldn't require it to be less than seventy hours, the applicant obviously can open for less hours if they choose.
Just some quick math, I think that's ten to eight, seven days a week. Would get us to seventy and. You know, ten to nine would be, you know, seventy seven or.
Okay. Alright, and uh last question, there was a. A comment about garbage. Going onto the neighbor's property, wh-what's the garbage plan for the new business?
There'll be uh refuse containers inside, outside, the dumpster corral enclosure is staying as is. Um, so and there's. Quite frankly, there's very little waste, um, the packaging is is small, uh, it's not like a, you know, a um. It's like a fast food restaurant, we have bags um and and disposable cups and. Uh, paper products, napkins, you don't have any of that, the there's a very limited uh waste stream.
Gotcha. Is there a, is there a property manager tied to this or is it just the owner?
It'll be the licensee will be responsible for everything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Tito, and Nick may ask a crazy question, since I haven't ever dealt with somebody where we're going into something where there's gonna be a different property owner and. Somebody, do they come back to us at that point and have to, or do they sign something again saying this is what? We've stood by, so you know, this gentleman here who says everything's well and good, and then we get to the new person who says, eh. You know, here I am, so what happens with this, since it's a transference?
Uh, whatever you uh approve, if you approve it is is binding, and so you're approving this land use, you're not necessarily. Considering who the operator is, it's is is the land use and the site plan appropriate? Are the hours of operation appropriate? And if um if those get written into the decision letter, then whoever the licensee is has to abide by by those parameters. But we we've approved. More than one project here where people are not. Doing what they told us they were going to do. And I don't think we have a really good way of addressing it or. Policing it, policing it, you know, that's my, that's my feeling. We've done, we've done more than one where there's drive up front street and take a look at the. It's the situation we got there.
It does appear to get be getting better. With the new uh turnover in code enforcement, but but I I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
The the one thing I will add to this is, you know, being that this is. Run through the state of New York and the Office of Cannabis Management. They can assist you in anything that's legally binding here tonight, um, you would have that backing. You know, they they ultimately control the license, and if the licensee isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing. Then there can be repercussions to their license.
I hate to sound very cynical. Do you think anybody has any trust in any state bureaucrat out of Albany? Don't answer that. But I mean. Real.
Alright, well, uh, any other questions or comments or?
It's a special use permit, right? Uh.
So they plan review and special use permit, yes.
So I mean, I I. Still have some concerns with, you know, whether it's compatible with the neighborhood, you know, we've heard from, you know, several community members who live directly next to it and. You know, they clearly do not want this near their property or in their neighborhood and, you know, will it change the character of the neighborhood? Will it protect public health and safety? You know, they've made arguments that it won't, um. One of my board members feel differently or have an opinion.
Good question. First, you wanna start us off?
I I'm not, nothing against the work that the construction guy is doing, but I'm not wowed with the application. I've got lots of flinging questions.
Because looking at me like he wants me to say something, so I'll go ahead. I mean, I stayed in my position earlier, I mean, there's, there's no way in the world that. In the role of the current school board president, that I'm gonna approve of this thing being fourteen hundred feet from the school and I'm in the same place as Manny, I think the the effects on the neighborhood. Um, set apart from the school being uh this close to residential properties, it's a very different. Site setup from just breathe and not really analogous completely, so um. Not something I'd want to introduce to the neighborhood.
Well, before you guys uh, you know, take any further action, I'd like to just, you know, make a comment that, you know, this is within your C one district. It is within your cannabis district that you guys have outlined within on your website. Um, it meets all of the regulations that you guys have already set up in your town and your city. Uh, you know, to limit who can go where at this point, um, would be a disservice to the landlord, to the applicant. Uh, you know, a lot of time money has been spent in getting to this point in this project. You know, and if it fits everything, I mean, you guys had as a city. An opportunity to either opt in or opt out of the cannabis program, you guys have opted in. So people are coming here to try to, you know, be part of what you guys have opted into. Uh, and it meets all of your regulations, it fits in your C one service commercial district. And we'd like to ask for approval of it, your own guideline.
Gotcha. Chris?
Alright. Um. The the I will draw one distinction. The previous applications that can, there have been two that I've been around aware aware of that have been approved. The actual licensee was sitting here answering questions, addressing concerns to the community when they were brought up, and able to stare me right in the eye. You're just a construction guy, I don't even have the state bureaucrat or the landowner here to look me in the eye. So that's, that's a concern on that hand.
But any approvals that are given here tonight with contingencies will be bound to by whomever is taking this over. You know, any other licensee, if you guys are worried about, you know, this can transfer to a different licensee and and them not following it. What happens if just breathe or one of these other companies transfers it, or what if they just decide, oh, we don't like those rules anymore? You know, you're you're commenting you don't have an enforcement mechanism, well, you that could be with either a licensee that's already in the the facility. Or it could be with a future licensee in that facility. You know, I don't think that there should be a punishment that the. Actual person, you know, that is going to be running the business is here, you know, a lot of times the actual person that's running a business. Doesn't come to these, it's an engineer, it's an architect, um, you know, it's not normally a layperson. Coming to this.
Well, I respect and understand that, I think that since this is such a new concept. That the the fears are aggravated by what the potential for its downfall as as opposed to. Any positive things and the other applicants have been in someplace that. Whether these are the districts that we've allowed and and sort of set set aside. They've been in such a very different places that there isn't, you know, just breathe this right downtown, it it isn't up against a school, there's nothing. Residential about it, so for us to ask these questions. It is because it is, it is on our side to make sure we're representing. That that we don't change and if we do change, it's a positive change. It's a new thing, you know, it's not like saying, well, liquor store is gonna go in and this is what's gonna happen. The the life, it's very different, you know, so we don't, we don't know, so it's new for us, for our city. So I think that, you know, obviously it's just keeping to say that you're the guy representing and we don't know to trust whether it is. I don't know, I I I'd be better with tabling and find out some legal things that I think, I I'm not sure, I think right now. You're not sounding like you're gonna get a great bit of approval from us, and I'm not, I'm not sure with that, if I just speak to to that. Anybody else wanna comment?
I will, I won't lie, I. I don't know if you're getting the yes vote out of me either tonight, so. The applicant may want to have this table to give.
Right.
Us a chance to find out legally what kind of things we can do, cause like Manny, I don't wanna vote. Yes, with contingencies only finding out that those contingencies aren't legal anyways, and then we've approved something without the contingencies we want.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
If if I could just ask a quick question, sorry, if 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 you.
Yeah, we'll probably drop before we.
Yeah, if we if we know how many no's we have right now. Regardless, and it's not gonna pass then. Can we poll now?
I was just gonna say that if you do make a motion to table, if you can include in there, um. Anything that you would wanna see on the site plan in your revision, so the landscaping, uh, the removal of the rip rap, maybe a taller fence. Uh, limitations on signage uh could be included in there. Um, if if we're worried about advertising of cannabis, um, the hours of operation. Um, if you could sort of try to include some of those things into the, as the reason why you're tabling when you make a motion, if you do table.
Alright, so I guess um. I'm just gonna go uh against the flow here, uh, so from my standpoint, the the. Site is on a highly commercialized uh street. Um, I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, but they also live right behind a highly commercial street. Um, I'm not comfortable limiting somebody's ability to. Put an approved use into a commercial building that that. We spent, the city spent time establishing what districts they were going to allow this in and then to come and. For us to shoot it down, um, makes me uncomfortable, so. Um, I don't see, I hear a lot of anecdotal stories about drugs and I don't think they're accurate anymore, um. I, I mean, the entire uh. Law has changed around cannabis use, um, I think it's a little bit of an antiquated viewpoint on uh the use of it. Um, so I I would be a yes, but I've obviously one person. Um, so. In the interest though of saving the applicant's time. Is there anything that they could do realistically that would change the plan enough? That anybody who is probably going to vote no would potentially change their vote, or they. They have decided that the this is going to change the character of the neighborhood and there's really nothing that could be done, it's. More what this is than anything that they could do physically to the site plan to change your mind. I guess that's a question about whether or not we table it or we just vote and just be done with it. Tonight. So I guess that's a question, uh.
I could see myself voting yes with certain contingencies.
Okay.
But without certain contingencies. I could be a no, but I I would be one be willing to table. With I my vote could, depending on what we discover. Could change.
Alright, so Kelly, you in the same boat, I know Steve is not going to change. Manny, are you, is there anything that could be done that?
I could change depending on.
Okay.
What we we get back.
Okay. And Mario. Okay, so Mario's, okay, and it, does this just need a majority vote or does this need a super majority or?
A majority.
Just a majority vote, okay. Alright, so. As far as the contingent approval then. Or what what are we on?
Make the motion? That help?
Well, what I guess I'm just curious, what are we hung up on as far as what what we're not sure is legal or?
So.
That we can enforce.
I would like to make a motion to table. So we could discover. The legal options of limiting the times they're open. That was one of the things that we, that's sort of an open question.
Is that something that like city council would have to to pass across the board or is that something we could?
I I think that you could, you could put those restrictions, because this is a special use permit, you could put those restrictions on this project.
Is there council behind us on this if we do that? You gonna have our backside?
I'd like to look into a little more.
Okay, so you're okay with us tabling to get a definitive answer, okay?
So hold on one second, just on that. Can we make it a conditional approval? With the understanding that if anything we've made a condition is illegal, that they would have to come back in for a site plan. Modification or they would have to come back again. To review this or?
I don't think it's a good idea, I think we should find out first.
Okay. Alright.
May I ask, wha-what are the requested hours by the by the board, Monday through Thursday? Ten to nine, is that what was being said?
Yes.
Okay. Friday. Saturday, uh, Friday, Saturday, ten to ten?
Until 10:00 PM, yes.
And then Sunday? What was being requested for Sunday?
Ten to five or six.
And to, can we say six? I mean, Just Breathe is, I believe, till six. Can we say six for that as well? Is that acceptable?
Yes, that sounds. I think, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're just taking notes?
Yeah, I'm just taking notes. Yeah.
Alright. Okay, so hours of operation would be a big
Yeah.
big concern.
Sure that we can do that legally. Um, that's why I would like to motion to table this.
Gotcha. Okay.
The other thing, so we're on the record. Landscaping issue was the other thing I want to put on in an eventual contingency.
Yep.
If we get that far and we're gonna.
Yeah. Uh, Tito, between now and the next meeting, would we be able to get a copy of the landscape plan that was approved when it was A and W?
Yeah, I should be able to scan it. Uh, you could also ask for, for them to submit a new landscape plan, um.
And lighting.
And lighting, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll try to find it and scan it tomorrow so that the applicant, um, has it if it's available. And if it's not available, they'll know so that they have time to revise their drawing.
Alright. Alright, are there any other concerns that could be potentially addressed through the site plan?
You know, uh, while we're here though, if we could see where the security cameras would be and if there could be security cameras along the perimeter, at least on the outside of the building as well.
There are on the outside, yeah. There, there are cameras all around the perimeter of the exterior of the building, but.
So if we could, yeah, have that as part of the, uh.
So you'd like to see a security camera layout and coverage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Anything else that would help?
Um, Tito, I didn't quite hear all the DOT suggestions, but were there things in there that we might want to include?
Um, they wanted details on the anticipated traffic generation and the proposed operation of the drive-through. Uh, I think in the context of a site plan that could be showing how many stack spaces fit in the queue for the drive-through. Um, and then maybe they get an estimate for, for, uh, traffic numbers that they can provide to you.
Sure.
Alright. Alright.
Sorry for my ignorance on this too. It's probably already up here. Do we have, um, placement of signage and, and the lighting of signage on here? Already where that's gonna be?
So the signage will be on the building exterior, uh, attached directly to the facade of the building. And then there's a single stand sign out front that would have it as well. Uh, you did mention at one point, uh, something regarding advertising. There is no advertising. There are no logos. The signage is regulated by OCM to just be the name of the company and that's all. There's no reference to marijuana. There's no, um, uh, pictures, nothing like that.
Alright.
And, and the windows are, uh, frosted so that you cannot see inside the building. So there's no, you don't see any product or advertising, uh, from the exterior of the building at any time.
Alright. Alright, so I think the applicant has some stuff to consider between now and our next meeting. Alright, anybody want to make a motion to table? Alright.
Make a motion to table until the December meeting.
Alright, motion by Chris.
I'll second.
By Manny, all in favor? Alright, but, uh, Steve, were you in favor? Okay, six in favor, zero opposed. Alright.
So with that, uh, December fifth, is that correct?
Great question.
Okay, and any modifications to this? Uh, if I was to submit them to, let's say a week prior, does that work?
Yeah, at least.
For distribution to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Did anybody want anything with the fence there? I just want to be clear on the notes I sent him. The, any changes to the fencing of the property? Is that something that the board wants included?
Rip rap.
Okay.
In replacing that.
And that might solve the fencing issue. That's, that's.
Yeah. As long as the fence is, you know, a stable height and in good condition, I think we're, you know.
Yeah. I think I'm with Kelly. It'd be great if you could take a look at the fence because I do see that it's, it's at the bottom of a slope.
Oh, yeah.
Right up at the top, so it would be easy to look over that fence into the neighbor's yard.
Um, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at the fence right now. I, you know, I can distribute this picture, you know, with the package I send you guys.
Yeah, could you do that?
Yeah, it's, it's a six foot high cedar fence, at, at least. It might be eight feet high.
Look at, I have a great scene. We have an eight foot fence. So that wouldn't be unreasonable.
Yeah.
We had to put it in just to get the dog, so.
Yeah, yeah, it looks best six. I mean, is it eight?
Eight foot fence?
Still, yeah. Do you?
Yeah, so it is a pretty substantial fence back there.
Okay. Alright. We'll see you back in December then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. Alright, on to our next public hearing and deliberation. Uh, this is going to be for the applicant mothers and babies. Project address is thirty-three to forty-one Whitney Ave. And this is a site plan review for the construction of a five thousand five hundred and twenty square foot social services building in the I three heavy industrial district.
Just one quick correction, that should be C one service commercial district.
In the C one service commercial district. Alright. Welcome back.
Good evening. My name is Peter Michael Masiak. I've been an East Sider for many, many moons. I've been involved with this site since eighty-nine, almost thirty-some years. We built the Walgreens, we did all the other. Knocked down all those buildings, the car wash and everything, made Vance Auto. Now this is the last of the corner of the site that we're looking at for mothers and baby. Did you all get a site? View of what it would look like? Basically? I didn't bring my board to pin it up, but I can hold it up if you'd like. But basically, it cleans the whole corner up right to Robinson Street with the Walgreens and everything else. And this site for mothers and babies, originally we're, they were looking at eight, eighty-four hundred square feet. But the time came in the constraints where they end up buying a building in Johnson City and Grand Ab and moving a lot of their areas there. But we held them basically there saying, look, we'll downsize the building for you. We'll do whatever we gotta do to make this project happen. And, you know, it was just like the Rite Aid. We waited fifteen years to get the Rite Aid built and then Walgreens took it over, but it went to Eckert, it went to three different people, basically. But it's like anything else, time wears on and you move on. So everything worked out to that point of it. But now this is the last phase on that parcel and we even bought another forty feet from Cook Brothers out back that enhanced the property for future use, in case they wanted to do some things out there. But their biggest problem they have is their grant, they get grants for all their leases and things. So basically, we said, look, it, we're not, it's not about the money for us. It's a good thing for the East Side and, uh, we think, you know, we're entitled to help you. We'll help them. And that's what we're here for. And that's why we're pushing for this. And then we went through a few obstacles, but it's a great project and we look forward to doing it for them.
Alright. Uh, alright, any questions before we open public hearing? Alright. Um.
Tito. Oh, yeah, I just, are there any changes, uh, on that plan set? Is that, are there any differences between that and what was originally submitted?
No, this is the same one that was submitted.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, it looks like.
By Keystone. Architecture.
It looks like you can probably stay right at the microphone. Um. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant mothers and babies. Project address is thirty-three to forty, forty-one Whitney Ave. This is a site plan review for the construction of a five thousand five hundred and twenty square foot social services building in the C one service commercial district. Uh, if anybody wants to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Alright, and Tito, we didn't get any letters submitted about this one, right? No, alright, no letters submitted. Alright, seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, alright, any questions, concerns?
I think, didn't we get a letter or? Oh, no, my, not this one, sorry.
Alright, yeah, no le- no letters about this one. Alright, uh, seeing no questions or comments, uh, I'll make a motion. Alright, so this was a unlisted action under seeker. So I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker review based on the following. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Uh, no or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Uh, no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Uh, no or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Uh, no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Uh, no or small impact. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, no or small impact. So based on those items, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration. Uh, seconded by Chris. All in favor? Alright, that's six in favor, zero opposed. Tito?
I just want to note for the record, we did get county comments on this. They did not find a significant impact. They just wanted to note that the city should consider the need for screening, buffering, or, or other mitigation from the surrounding industrial district. And that, uh, this is in the preliminary FEMA special flood hazard area and the applicant should be aware of the risks.
Gotcha. Are you aware of the flooding risks where you're building?
We, we didn't never got flooded there in two eleven and two oh six and never flooded.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, alright. Yeah, I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review have been met. Alright, seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright, six in favor, zero opposed. Should add you go first.
I look forward to doing it. Now I gotta do it.
Yeah. Alright, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any? Gotcha. Do you have any cannabis retails, uh, coming your way? What's that? Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah. Alright. Nice. Alright, thank you. Alright, our last public hearing tonight is for the applicant Jean Van Buren. The project address is forty-three Riverside Drive. This is a site plan review and special use permit to allow a home bed and breakfast in the R one residential single unit dwelling district. Welcome back.
Hi. Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. Just want, you might want to correct the spelling of my name. It's Jeannie, J E A N N E.
Gotcha.
Instead of Jean.
Alright, Jean.
So, um, do you have any questions for me today?
Uh, let's see, has anything changed since the last time you were in front of us?
Um, no, except I've had the signs up and, um, I had, um, three hundred positive responses from the WNBG Facebook. Um, Bob Joseph took a picture of my house. So it's no longer very, um, confidential for me. Um, which upset me quite a bit since I worked with law enforcement and I worked with all the SWAT teams and deescalated homicide and suicidal people with weapons. So now everyone knows where I live.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't think that was going to come to this. I thought this would be more confidential. So I am disappointed with that. Um, cause I do live alone and I'm going to be seventy-four in a couple of weeks. Um, other than that, um, I think I've met all the requirements to have this.
Alright.
Airbnb and like I told you before, I, you, I only plan to really use one bedroom, um. I'm not that ambitious to clean and cook for people.
Alright.
And I plan on just having professionals, um, artists and musicians and, um, um, you know, I'm a published writer, so. Um, and I'm doing background checks on everybody. I have an app for that.
Alright.
And, um, since I live alone, I have to be careful about who comes into my home.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Alright. I think we did get a revised plan that addressed the attic, not having, uh, it just now is labeled storage.
Right.
Slash attic.
Right.
And I think the new plan only shows two bedrooms.
Correct.
labeled guest bedroom. So I think that cleared some confusion up from last meeting.
Right.
And, uh, Jeannie, just to clarify, you said that you would not accept more than one booking at a time during a certain period?
Well, I really only want to book one bedroom, but I, um, I know a man who wants to come for his son's graduation. He wants to bring his wife and daughter.
Right, but it would be like just a single.
Most of the time, just one bedroom, but I'm allowed up to two. According to the R one zoning.
I think.
For only twenty-one days at a time.
And also this is a classic case of, uh, in case something were to happen, you decided to sell it, whoever bought it would be grandfathered into whatever we approve here.
Really?
Yeah.
Hmm.
So we have to think about that, even though you wouldn't necessarily rent both rooms, whoever comes next could.
Um, oh, I see. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Unless you're planning to live forever, in which case we could.
Live this long? No. Um, yeah, I understand that concern too, because, you know, it, this doesn't just involve me having an Airbnb, but whoever comes after me.
Right. Alright, well, let's do this. Uh, let's open the public hearing. I think you can probably stay at the microphone for this one too. Um, alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant. Uh, Ms. Van Buren. Uh, project address is forty-three Riverside Drive. This is a site plan review and special use permit to allow home bed and breakfast in the R one residential single unit dwelling district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Alright, and Tito, can you summarize the letters we got?
Yeah, we have one letter in opposition. And I will I will summarize. Um. Many neighbors, including myself, are concerned with parking on Murray Street and Vincent Street. Uh, they go on to name several, uh, student housing properties in the vicinity. Uh, complicating matter, matters further. Five cars parked in front of twenty-nine Murray. There are two dental offices on Riverside across from each other where staff park on Murray, plus a temple on the corner of Murray and Riverside. Forty-three Riverside is a very small. Forty-three Riverside is a very small one-car parking space on Murray. There's no additional parking for bed and breakfast guests. Uh, further complication is attempting to cross Riverside Drive at this intersection. The homeowner is asking for this variance. Uh. Allegedly does not clear snow. Uh. In front of their home. Variance should not be granted, uh, in the R one district. I believe she's referring to not a variance, but a parking waiver that would be required. Uh, which the planning commission is entitled to give because it's a landmark property.
Okay.
So that's the one in opposition. And then the one in favor. Um, states. Homeowner and long-term resident at forty-seven Riverside Drive. And I am in favor of a home bed and breakfast at forty-three Riverside Drive, two doors east of my home. I do have one concern, parking. I hope that the plan includes parking for bed and breakfast renters. Available only on Murray Street around the corner because parking and traffic on Riverside Drive can be inconvenient at times. Forty-three Riverside is on the corner of Murray and Riverside, and the driveway is on Murray. I hope Ms. Van Buren's bed and breakfast is successful. It's a good idea.
I might say, I've taken photographs of our street all times of the day and evenings. Plenty of parking on Murray. No one parks on Riverside Drive in my neighborhood. Except, um, when the temple. The policeman parked in front of the temple, of course, during services. Um, the only other person that parks on Riverside Drive are my next-door neighbors to the west of me. Um, but. It's very odd if anybody parks on Riverside Drive. There's plenty of parking. And I know I'm exempt from that according to. But I will say, my neighbor has offered her driveway as well.
Oh.
Um. Most people I'll be entertaining don't have a car. They come by plane.
Okay. All right.
Uh, was there another concern? Um. So this is just one neighbor's concern, right?
Uh, we, yeah, one, one letter.
And some hearsay that other people.
Yeah.
When almost everyone, everyone in my neighborhood has supported it, even on Facebook.
Yeah. One letter that listed it was in opposition, the other one that was listed that it was in favor of it, so.
I see.
Uh, all right, before we go any further, uh, I'll just, since that's all we've got, uh, nobody else is approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. So, all right, everybody. Yep, Steve?
I went back and watched the video of. Last month's meeting, because I thought I'd heard something. I want to make sure that I got it right. You had said that you did not intend to rent to couples, but you'll be renting to a couple and a child coming for graduation?
Because I know this person and they're Orthodox Jewish family, so my location is good for them. And the son lives here, who's gonna be graduating.
But as a matter of course, you would not.
No.
I mean, I, I.
No, I really prefer not to have couples because. Um. My bedroom's on that floor. And.
Trust me, I get it.
No, okay. And I don't want to share my bathroom with more than, you know. I'm an old nurse. I should say, all right.
I, I guess a question I have, and I had raised it, um. In between meetings, but to bring it to the public forum. Um, is there an issue with granting a special use permit for something that on its face sounds like? You know, somewhat discriminatory?
Ooh.
Rental practice? You know, if you're saying that you don't want to rent to couples, it's almost like discriminating on a relationship.
The house, that's not discriminatory, because I can choose whoever comes to me. Unless you're thinking of that in business terms, but.
Well, yes, because.
I mean, I will take couples. I don't think they're gonna be comfortable in a double bed.
Probably not.
I'm, most couples are spoiled these days.
I'm simply raising the question. I have any other issues with this, uh, proposal on its face, but, um, wanted to throw that out there in case it mattered.
I understand your concern. I mean, I'm not saying no to couples, but my preference is.
No, I mean, but you know, let's, let's kind of walk it through in hypotheticals. So you have a, a.
Sure.
Mr. and Mrs. Seprisawd call up and say, we'd like to rent a room. You know, and you tell us no, or you have a same-gender couple that says, we'd like to rent a room, and you say no, and, you know, they may not understand that you are. Applying that equally, but, you know, there's core cases of people losing their businesses, like, you know, uh. Because, uh, it was perceived to be discriminatory and the courts ruled in their favor, and so, uh, they got their B and Bs shut down for reasons like that.
I wouldn't have a problem renting to same gender or trans or, I'm actually a trans counselor. But, um, I wouldn't have a problem renting to anybody like that. I mean, hosting is the word we use. Um, I would just want them to know it's just a double bed and. And there's not a lot of closet room.
So it sounds like the, the specifics of the. Rental listing will limit who applies to rent there anyway.
Hmm, I don't think my listing will limit anybody.
No, no, I'm just saying, it, it'll say.
Unless they don't pass my. Um. My people check.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it'll say there's a double bed and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it'll weed itself out. I got you.
Yeah.
All right.
And I have a friend in the neighborhood who has. Who has a lot of, who has larger, larger rooms and betters. I, I, I would send people to other places that are maybe make them more comfortable.
Gotcha.
For our purposes and how we word this with the conditional approval, just to make sure that it withstands multiple owners, would we say? Only one booking for one room at a time? Is that something we're able to do? What would we?
Oh, I'm not sure we could. You'd, I think you'd have to say that it, it was only an application for one bedroom. You couldn't approve it. With two bedrooms listed, because, yeah, the next person.
According to what I read, I'm allowed one to two bedrooms for twenty-one days.
So we would just know more than two bedrooms or?
Yeah, it's more or less approve or deny.
Gotcha. Um. So if we approved as-is, someone comes down and wants to rent three, they would not be able to.
Correct. I'll let.
If there's three, then somebody has to sleep with me.
What was? The, what was the question?
Oh, just, uh, you know, we've got the revised site plans that shows, you know, three total bedrooms, I believe.
Yep.
One's mine.
Right, but I'm just saying the owner after you. You know, would they be able to add bedrooms or?
I don't think they'd move to the attic because it's not heated or air conditioned.
Attic is not habitable, so they, they couldn't do that officially. I, I think what.
It wouldn't.
Planning Commission could do is, uh, is if you're gonna approve it, approve a. Home bed and breakfast with. Two guest rooms on the second floor, or one, like, get, be specific with the approval.
Okay.
Um, and that should. Work.
And then just on the, the parking component, could we require that that? That parking variance just beyond Murray?
I don't think anybody's gonna want to park on Riverside Drive.
Um, so what you would be doing is waiving the parking requirement, um.
We couldn't specify that.
Yeah, you wouldn't have any authority to have, because it's a public street, you couldn't dictate where. Which street, um, they could park on. You either waive the requirement or enforce it on-site.
Gotcha. All right, so at the last meeting in regards to the parking requirement, we did say we were. Everybody was in favor of the wa, waiving the requirement. Uh-oh, Chris looks, uh, like he's.
Well, I think that's part of, I. Well, here's the thing with the. If I might say something, um, because of the age of my house, I'm exempt from that.
Uh.
There's, I have some written information about that.
Because it's a landmark.
Right.
The planning commission can waive the parking requirement. It's not automatic, but it's eligible to have it be waived.
Correct.
All right.
We can't stipulate to your wording from what I'm assuming, but I know in. The bajillions of times I've rented an Airbnb, they will say. Here's where you park, you know, if you're, if, if they come to you and you can say parking is on Murray Street. You know, that doesn't mean that they're not gonna park on Riverside, but. You know, you control the narrative of them parking on. On Murray Street. I mean.
And I can't imagine anybody would want to park on.
Exactly. I mean, hopefully that's in the wording of the listing. At. By Tuesday.
Fair enough. All right. Anybody else? Questions or comments? All right. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion, uh, at the last meeting, we decided that this was a type-two action. Um, because it was involved the reuse of an existing residential building, so no further environmental review is required. So I'll make a motion, a conditional. Motion of approval that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Uh, conditioned upon. That only, uh, that a maximum of two rooms. Would be eligible for renting, so two rooms would be considered guest rooms in the building. Uh. As shown on the updated floor plan that we received on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and, uh. Do you need a separate motion to waive the, uh, parking requirement?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so. I'll make that motion first, conditional approval, two, two rooms only maximum for guest rental. Uh, second by Kelly or a question? All right, second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to waive the parking requirement for the project. All right, seconded by Steve, all in favor? Five in favor, all opposed?
Nay.
All right, one opposed, so five in favor, one opposed. All right. So you're off and running.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Didn't expect it to be this complicated.
All right. Thank you.
So much.
All right, that concludes public hearings and final deliberations on other business. Does anybody have any other business? Chris has other business.
Uh, not for tonight, uh, but I did want to suggest that because the first public hearing went much longer than I expected. But I was gonna suggest that maybe, like I mentioned on the base camp discussion, if maybe at some future meeting where there's a shorter agenda. If we could discuss. Phase development and how we should be reviewing phase development and, because it came up in one of the trainings. Uh, that I sat through, and I know there've been a couple, like, there was the Fairview Development or something where you were like, hey. Coming to this once every five years is different than coming with a full plan that we can really look at. And I know when, um. The Charles Street ACBC group came forward, you know, we were only a, a, addressing their warming station, but they were very candid. There's got forty of other things they want to put in that building. So at what point should we be? Both legally allowed to and yet good stewards to be able to ask, hey, so what's the bigger plan?
Yeah.
Not just what you're coming for, for this one specific project. If there's four phases. When can we ask questions about phases two through four and how that? Can also impact all these other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, not necessarily for tonight, but I.
Yeah. Excellent, uh, excellent thing to talk about, for sure, yeah. Um. That sounds great.
My, my question, I meant to ask this. Weeks ago, is there any way for us to expedite? You know, this was a little bit longer, but like, these poor people who have to sit here through an hour, is there a way for us to figure out, even though we haven't in a listed, um. You know, manner that we're gonna go to, it, it seems like we, we might be able to ju, jump things around, so. They can get out of here quicker. They don't have to sit through two hours worth of stuff if it's not applicable. Is there a way to do this?
Uh, so the, the time that's in the legal notice, you wouldn't be able. To have the public hearing for a given case before that time. So it won't always work, but, um, it could be done, like, if the time for. Uh, mothers and babies has already passed. And there's another case before them that you think is gonna be very long. You could move, you could switch those around. As long as you're not holding a public hearing before the published time.
What would we want to do? Like, what kind of motion would we need to make to swap items two and three in the agenda? Because we see forty people here for item one, two, but nobody's here for item three.
I think it's a motion to suspend the rules and, uh. Amend the agenda to have case X, uh, move ahead of case Y. Why come after X? Yes. Yeah, so a motion is to suspend the rules to do, to, to move a case.
So we couldn't, like, table it for fifteen minutes or, or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sometimes I let people drone on, um, but. Sometimes it just seems like. It would be more of a, it would be more of an issue to cut them off. For some people, so I'm sorry that it gets boring sometimes listening to.
Yeah, but no.
Yeah.
We've got to cover ourselves and let them be heard.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. All right. Anything else?
We'll try to get stipends out, sent out by the end of this week, and you all got a raise.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
To what?
Five seventy-five.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, uh, please, please also do the training if you haven't, uh. Would prefer before, like, December, like, mid-December.
Oh, yeah, our trainings?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just email. I've got a couple of them. I'll just email to you or just post it.
Just email the, I guess, the certificate or whatever.
Are you, are you talking about, like, the workplace violence and those things? Or are you talking about the, just the planning commission training?
I guess, like, their annual meeting that they had to do with the four hours.
So you have your annual, annual training requirements that you have to meet for planning commission related stuff. I think all board members also have to do. Like the sexual harassment. Workplace violence and all those things.
Uh, I, I mean, I didn't see it last year, so I'm not sure.
We'll check. You did, you did it already? Okay.
So.
Uh, yeah.
Let me ask this. Man, I've had to do all those trainings for the county. If we've got some sort of certificate, we already did this.
If it's the same one, yeah.
Oh, if it's the same one, it's a statewide, it's got some state.
Yeah.
Department of so-and-so bureaucrat. Opening the, you know, this is why sexual harassment is bad.
It's true. We could see what kind of certification or documentation we have.
I'll, I'll check and see if you have to do it. You may not.
That's right.
In case you forget.
Yeah.
And there's more like tampered materials, like, which thing, like, don't touch.
That was interesting, yeah, I didn't know.
Right.
Yeah, we should know that.
Uh, all right, motion to adjourn?
All right, motion to adjourn by Manny, seconded by Chris, all in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed, all right. Well, five in favor, one opposed. All right. Thank you.